In the process of identifying some helpful, specific resources to better support council members' mental wellbeing that will soon be made available to everyone. If any member has specific wellbeing concerns with regard, for example, to workload, they must raise this with their group leader who will be able to support them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you, councillor Cresswell, for your answer. That was very good and very informative. My second question is, if you recall the last full council, I was subjected to an inappropriate and hostile words, and I was saddened to see some of your groups applauding inappropriate speech. And I would like you, all I would like you to do is to address this issue, please, with your group and to prevent it from happening again. Thank you.
Oh, it is working now. Would you like to respond to that, councillor Cresswell?
Thank you for your supplementary question. I would just like to add that words that are said are often said as a metaphor for debate within this chamber. We are in a political arena and vigorous debate is to be expected. But thank you for your supplementary question. I take it on board.
Thank you, councillor Cresswell. Answer, Danny, your next question, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. My question has been diverted to our leader, Madam councillor Andorian. What is the total income lost for Turner Street parking during the illegal encampment, including the clean-up in August? Thank you.
Councillor Dorian, will you please respond?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I thank councillor Danny for notice of his question. The anticipated loss of car park income due to the illegal encampment is £200, and the cost of the clean-up was £1,050, Mr Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dorian. Do you have a supplementary question?
Yes, Mr Mayor, thank you. Thank you, Madam Leader, for your answer. However, on Lincolnshire News on Boston page, it stated 8,792. However, that's not probably my main supplementary question. All I would like to ask you is what's our strategy and plans for the next time to prevent these things from happening and save the residents of Boston? Thank you. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Do you wish to respond, councillor Dorian?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. Councillor Danny, your question was very specific. Your question asked for the loss of car park income and the clean-up cost of that car park, and I answered you in full. The figure you refer to that was published last weekend refers the total cost of the incursion, the illegal incursion, which included officer time, legal costs and so on. If you read that press release, which you clearly did, you will also know that this council has plans in place to learn lessons from what happened in August. Some of those lessons include looking at, but aren't exclusive to, for instance, putting high barriers on car parks, looking at ways that we work with the police, and also looking to lobby our MP so that we get stricter powers, more severe powers, so that we can deal with the matter much more efficiently than we did this time. Two and a half days was two and a half days too long, in my view. However, compared to your administration, councillor Danny, it was five days quicker than when you had an illegal encampment on Woodville Road Park in 2020. So rest assured, this administration will do everything within its power to keep the residents of Boston safe from harm. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor. Sorry, I've just read that. Thank you, councillor Dorian. Councillor Stephen Woodliffe, do you have a question, please?
Yes, Miss Mayor. This question is actually with councillor Callum Butler, but I know that the answer will be given by councillor Andorian. I'm perfectly happy with that. Probably don't sense a reversion I've probably just heard. So I'll read it. On Wednesday, the 23rd of August 2023, a group of about 100 travellers descended on Boston and illegally occupied the Borough Council's car park on Turnard Street. As we know, they were subsequently evicted a few days later, but left the car park in a complete mess. Our officers are to be congratulated in their swift restoration of that car park following the departure of the travellers. But given the Borough Council's stated zero tolerance position on littering, have the travellers been fined for the litter they have left on departure?
Councillor Dorian, would you care to respond, please?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you for, councillor Woodliffe, for notice of your question and your indulgence in allowing me to answer. It was me that dealt with the whole issue. So the answer sadly is no. The travellers have not been fined for fly tipping. This is because the CCTV was obscured, meaning that the council had no evidence of which particular vehicle or person had left the litter. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Dorian. Councillor Woodliffe, do you have a supplementary question?
Yes, Miss Mayor. On the surface, most people are just happy to see the travellers depart, but underneath, many people are seething about the continuing traveller issue and the trashing of our town. There's an air of disillusionment about the protection provided by the police, that that's something I will take up elsewhere. People feel their town has been violated by successive waves of travellers, and they've been badly let down by Lincolnshire County Council, the police, the government and social services, but not the Borough Council. Borough Council's done its best, I think. Littering, the criminality and the blatant lack of appropriate parental control, what actions do you think you have in mind to ensure there's no repeat of this illegal encampment and all the troubles we've had associated with the littering and everything else? And I don't expect you to answer right away, councillor Andorian. You can send me a written answer if you choose, because it's rather a convoluted question, isn't it? So I'd leave it entirely in your hands as to whether you want to answer it or just send me a note. Okay?
Thank you, councillor Woodliffe. Do you wish to answer?
No, I think, I thank you for your question, councillor Woodliffe, and I would like to answer in public because it's important that the public get to hear the answer because they share many of the sentiments that you expressed, and indeed I share those sentiments as well. I was seething. That was your word, seething. I was seething. I was furious. I went to bed spitting for three nights in a row. It was a dreadful illegal encampment. The police told me, the superintendent told me, that in 28 years of policing, he had never experienced anything like that. So that's how bad it was. The town, the people of the town did feel violated. They were violated. They weren't safe to go about their business. We had to take the decision to close the market, as you know, and close the swimming pool because people had been violated, they'd been threatened and intimidated. In addition to that, I am pleased that you recognise that perhaps the police didn't have the sufficient powers that they needed to address the issue, although I can tell you that behind closed doors, they received a very different response from this administration to the one that they did in 2020. And for that very reason, they acted much more swiftly and issued a section 60 notice, which made it a criminal offence to occupy that car park. You mentioned the lack of parental control, and that's a very good point you've raised because many people saw for themselves groups of teenagers marauding around the town centre as far out as Tesco and causing havoc. And there was a very deliberate MO there, a very deliberate modus operandi on behalf of the travellers, and that is the police are far more reluctant to arrest teenagers because they are children. In the eyes of the law, they're children, and it invokes all kinds of safeguarding procedures that they must put in place. And they certainly don't like putting children in a cell, that's for sure. So although some young people were arrested because of the havoc they wreaked at McDonald's, the McDonald's supervisor or manager refused to give over the evidence of the criminality, and so those children were de-arrested the same night. So all that, like, you can imagine, look how exasperated you are. Can you imagine the exasperation that we felt at all this happening? So as to stopping it happening again, we will do everything we possibly can, and we will keep you informed every step of the way. Okay? Thank you, councillor Woodliffe. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Dorian. Another question here from councillor Stephen Woodliffe to councillor Butler.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. It was reported in the Boston Target dated Wednesday, the 6th of September 2023, that Boston Borough Council performs well in dishing out fines to fly tippers. That's a quote from the paper, compared with other local authorities in Lincolnshire. However, the headline on the front of the Boston Standard, also dated Wednesday, the 6th of September 2023, was imprisoned by fly tips. A resident of Sydney Street, Miss Lynne Johnson, is quoted in the paper saying, "The persistent fly tipping issues on Sydney Street continues to make me a prisoner in my own home. This matter has been raised before in this chamber, yet this deplorable matter continues. What swift actions are planned to deal with this very serious matter, given the council's stated zero tolerance on fly tipping?" May I, she's a disabled lady, by the way.
Thank you. Do you wish to respond, councillor Butler?
Thank councillor Woodliffe for his important question. The council continues to work hard to investigate and take enforcement action against littering and fly tipping. I can confirm that in the last six months, there have been 12 reported incidences of fly tipping on Sydney Street. Every effort is taken to investigate and clear fly tips quickly, and in these cases, 11 of the 12 fly tips were cleared quickly within two working days. One fixed penalty notice has been issued in respect of these fly tips, as there was clear evidence of an offender. Enviro crime enforcement officers have been tasked with carrying out regular patrols in this location and will issue an FPN for anyone seen fly tipping or where evidence is available linking someone to the crime. We are actively looking into increasing the fines paid by individuals who are caught fly tipping, and finally, we are also looking into overt and covert cameras to deter and catch those that do this deplorable crime.
Thank you, councillor Butler. Do you have a supplementary question, please?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The supplementary question is this, all right? The Borough Council has a no-cost contract with a private company to curb fly tipping. Private company's income depends solely on the fines levied upon those who people caught fly tipping. Since fines are the private enforcement company's sole income stream, it therefore has no incentive to curb fly tipping, as that would indeed curb its income stream. Employing a private company to deal with the issue enables officers to offload the responsibility for tackling the issue, but councillors have to face the public, our electorate, who are understandably furious about the situation. Do you agree with me that it would be better to employ our own enforcement officers, who, under our direct control, would have every incentive to crack down on fly tippers for the fines paid directly to the council? And I asked this question, by the way, on the 6th of March for the other administrations, so it's repeat. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Woodliffe. Do you wish to respond, councillor Butler?
Thank you again, councillor Woodliffe. I don't currently have the information to provide you with the correct answer, but I shall respond in writing as soon as I'm able to.
Okay, thank you. Right, we've got no questions from members of the public, so I'll move on to part two of the agenda items.
Mr Mayor, may I just inquire before we move on whether any member wishes to declare any interest in respect of any items on tonight's agenda? Thank you.
Thank you. So now we're going to go on to Boston Grammar School, aren't we? Yes, right. Okay, the next item on this evening, the appointment of Boston Grammar School. No, it's that one, isn't it? Yes. That's John, oh, John Medler. I will now ask John Medler to introduce the electoral registration officer, deputy electoral officer and returning officer. So over to you, John.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and good evening, members. You have before you a report tonight, which is recommending to you the appointment of a new electoral registration officer and returning officer for the council, and it's proposed that Mr John Leach be appointed to those roles following the previous postholder leaving the authority. The paper also sets out in line with Electoral Commission best practice that the authority delegates the appointment of deputy electoral registration officers to the new electoral registration officer so that there can be continuity within that service area if there's a need for a deputy to act. The legislation, as it's drafted, allows the returning officer to appoint a deputy, but not the electoral registration officer without the agreement of this full council meeting. So without further comment, quite happy to answer any questions that are on the report or look for a proposal to the recommendations. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Are there any questions? Anybody wish to speak? Councillor Dorian?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I don't have any specific questions for Mr Medler. We've discussed this report in full. I just wanted to let council know that coming in as a new administration, Mr Mayor, we were, some of us, you know, learning, as we go, still learning, some were inexperienced, and I would like to, in the light of the way that Mr Leach has worked with us, just to share with everyone how accommodating he's been. He's a very humble man. He's got a very quiet, witty, droll sense of humour, but he's completely passionate about local government, and he's completely passionate about helping all elected members, regardless of which group you're in, do the best they can for the residents that they serve. So I wasn't involved in his appointment at all, I can't take any credit for it, but I'm delighted that he was appointed to this partnership, and I would completely endorse his appointment now as the returning officer. So thank you for indulging me, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Dorian. Are there any other questions? Does anybody else wish to speak? And a second, please. Councillor Dorian has agreed to propose. Do I have a second?
I'll propose that, Mr Mayor.
And has councillor Broaden.
I'm happy to second, Mr Mayor. I'd just like to reiterate what councillor Dorian has said, that I'm sure Mr Leach will be excellent in his position.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Members will recall that we made, this council made three appointments to the Boston Grammar School Charitable Foundation at its annual meeting, and that there was some further confirmation from that foundation as to whether there was a fourth position and as to whether a councillor could be appointed to that position. We've now received confirmation that this council can make that fourth appointment, and it can be a council member. So the report is brought back here tonight, and I'm seeking any nominations from the floor for that particular position. Thank you.
Councillor Dorian, do you wish to propose?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, I'd like to propose councillor Sivikieni to that role and look for a second.
Councillor Broaden, do you wish to second?
I'm very happy to second, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Does anybody wish to speak? Any questions? Are there any further nominations? Okay, we'll go to the vote. Those in favour? And those against? And those wishing to abstain? Okay, clearly carried, remember? Okay, the next item on this evening is the appointment to Local Government Association Special Interest Group on Internal Drainage Board levies. Councillor Dorian, would you like to present the report and recommendation, please?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. This is about the special interest group, that the partnership is leading a charge to persuade government that we need a new funding mechanism for the IDBs. And you're aware that recently, when I wrote to you, that our council is one of several in the country that's been really severely impacted by the steep rises in the levies. But we've got no choice. We can't say to the IDBs, you're not having your money this year. We've got to pay it. And I would like to say that the IDBs do a fantastic job for the residents of our borough. The levies have mostly risen due to utility costs, but we usually, even without the horrendous increases last year, we usually got a cost of living increase anyway. And so this is having a really significant impact in our ability to keep funding our services, because every time they put their bill up, we've got less to play with. We've got less to play with in terms of our budget. So this council in 2223 had to pay over 2.1 million, sorry, 2.15 million, and then that levy rose into 2324, this current year, to 2.47 million. Now, you all know we got a one-off grant from government, which was about £320,000, to help us fund the increase in that IDP level. However, the government indicated this is a one-off. Now, I've even lobbied our MP about that, I think the same day we got the notice, to tell him it wasn't enough and it wasn't going on long enough. He recognises that there is an issue, but he's obviously not a senior member of government, but he is sympathetic to the cause. Now, without action, the government, we want them to find a new, longer-term solution so that it becomes something that we can rely on. So to that end, our council led the charge, I don't even know who the idea, it might have been James Gilbert had the idea, I'm not sure, but it was a good idea, whoever had it, well done, that we form a special interest group as part of the Local Government Association. To do that, we needed a minimum of 10 councils to come on board, and so James wrote to all the councils who are affected by the IDP levies, the same as we are, and they all came on board very, very quickly. The LGB will make the decision, I think we've put forward a very good case, but it's their decision whether we have this group or not, and they will make that decision on the 18th of October, when they next have their board meeting. Given the importance of the financial position, I think it's important that we have our finance portfolio holder to represent us on the group. And so for that reason, I am nominating councillor Sandeep Ghosh to represent us on the special interest group, and we will keep you posted as to the outcome of the LGB board on the 18th of October. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Dorian. Do you have a second, please? Councillor Broaden, thank you very much. Do you wish?
I'd like to second, ma'am.
Do you wish to speak now or reserve your right to speak later? Okay, right. Have we got any questions, comments from anybody else? Does anybody else wish to speak? Councillor, councillor Danny?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. All I can say, I will support any fight for getting us any money because I don't really swerve for Boston to be deprived for that. And as I say, I will support anyone because it's a shame, a town like Boston, we have to beg the government for money all the time. It doesn't sound right. We have our own money, we have our own rate, and all we can do is generate more money. However, it goes somewhere else. We need more support, we need more money for this town to thrive, and I will support you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Danny. Does anybody else wish to speak? Councillor Austin, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I think this is clearly perhaps an advantage of greater strength with the partnership being Three Voices, and I think it's, well, as we all know, it's Drainage Board, the work we do in draining all our land, and it is also, in many respects, all the land, all the water that is sent to us from elsewhere in the county. So it's highly. all the water that is sent to us from elsewhere in the county. So it's highly appropriate, and I'm very pleased about this. Thank you.
Councillor Austin, any other questions from anybody else? Okay, it's been proposed and seconded, so we'll go to the vote. Was there a hand up there? Did I miss you? No, okay. All right, let's go to the votes. Those in favour of the proposition? Has carried, is it, Rhonda? Yes, okay. All right, the next item this evening is the Amendment of Capital Programme Local Authority Housing Fund Round Two. Councillor Baxter, would you care to present this, please?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and fellow councillors, good evening. In pages 20 to 21 to 28, you'll find this report and also in Annex, Annex A. This covers the Local Authority Housing Fund Round Two. So the purpose is to amend the council's capital programme reflecting the funds required to deliver five new properties under the Local Authority Housing Programme. Just to give you some information and some background information, we have discussed round one. And in a way, this round mirrors round one, which was the eight properties that were put forward to be developed. So in effect, central government chose us again after the first round and invited us to join round two. Once again, it has its financial advantages. In effect, they offer 20% of the value of each property plus £20,000 per property. So in effect, you'll see the figures, the government are giving us £471,950. We, in return, donate, well, not donate, we fund £671,000. So this will be five properties. Different to round one, it involves four properties to accommodate Afghan families. And one property, and this is the major difference and advantage to our council, this becomes available to us straight away to help the homeless or the vulnerable. So one of the properties actually for us to utilise. So to mention as well, it has been mentioned in various sort of papers, et cetera, what is the definition of an Afghan refugee? We've done some research. In effect, they have visas, they've been security checked, they come as well, because obviously they're fleeing from the Taliban. They have helped our armed forces, our embassies back home in their country and fled for their own safety. So longer term, these properties will become ours. So we can utilise them to obviously house them, temporary accommodation for homeless people. And we expect that the visas for the Afghan families will be three to five years. So after that period, we can utilise the properties. The advantages are that we obviously save on costs of bed and breakfast for homeless people. We have a rental income as well from these properties. They are going to be managed again through South Holland, who expertise in the first round. And also, over 30-year period, our finance people have estimated that there'll be a high proportion of the capital investment, a figure which will be circa 6.2%. So obviously, a financial advantage to us as well. So this went to cabinet on the 2nd of August, where it was agreed to take this forward. So what I'm asking for now, well, on Annex A, it mentions the amounts, look. So all I'm asking is then, a recommendation, the council's 2023/24 capital programme is amended to include the Local Authority Housing Fund project and the amounts as set out in Appendix A. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Baxter. That was very, very well delivered. Do you, sorry, here. Do you have a second, please?
Yeah, I happily seconded.
Thank you very much councillor Ghosh. Does anybody else wish to speak? Councillor Gilbert, followed by councillor Danny.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Yeah, I fully endorse this. I think it's an absolutely first-class opportunity for Boston to once again get back into the business of owning its own housing stock. I think it was a tragedy 30, 40 years ago when we sold off our housing stock. We essentially dumped billions of pounds' worth of public assets into the banking system by mortgages. It was never really about extending the property and democracy, it was about bailing out the banking system, in my opinion. So I'm very, very happy to support this. And I think Boston, if possible, should go further in developing its own council housing stock in the future. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gilbert. Councillor Danny?
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and thank you councillor Butterford, for councillor Baxter, sorry, for your presentation. I'm very delighted, and I tell you from my heart, because the Afghans, they get something, you know, done for them, because we probably ignored them and the work they did with our forces in Afghanistan and the help they give, and at least a small thing like that to be given and make them welcomed in our community, that makes me very pleased and very happy. Thank you very much, and I will support your recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Danny. Councillor Austin, you had your hand up.
Thank you again, Mr Mayor. A very simple question. I mean, I'm very happy with this, but are they new-built houses or are they existing properties that we are purchasing?
Do you wish to answer that councillor? Take your pardon? All right.
I remember, it might just be helpful.
Yeah, thank you for the question.
Sorry. I was just going to say, when we have questions that come up through debate, they're normally answered at the end by the proposer of the paper or by the, or the second, if they wish, if they've reserved their right to speak. So normally, we'd see if there's any questions from the floor, and at the end, you get the opportunity to provide an answer back to the councillor. Thank you.
Okay, if I reply now, my friends?
Of course.
So first of all, thank you for your encouragement. And we have had private discussions with councillor Gilbert and also councillor Danny for his comments, because, well, we're proud in Boston, aren't we, that we welcome people from away. To answer the question to councillor Austin, this is something we consider from a financial point of view. We have the author of this paper, Matthew Hogan, here, who's spent lots of work with his team researching. The timescales set by the government were quite tight. We did consider, say, a house that was maybe 10 years old and what the work would be involved. So we didn't have time to bring in all the work, then to bring it up to standard, and decided from a financial point of view, and because of the timescale, obviously, a new property comes with an NHP certificate. Such quickly, but most of all, the team worked really, really hard to negotiate discounts on some new properties. So we considered the various options and decided from a practical point of view, also from a financial point of view, the way ahead would be to look at new properties. So thank you for your question councillor Austin.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Does anybody else wish to speak? Okay. All right, we've had a proposal, we've had a second, so let's go to the vote, please. Who's in favour? Clearly carried, Rhonda? Okay, where are we now? Next item on this evening is the Local Code of Corporate Governance. Councillor Dorian, would you like to present this, please? You're busy tonight.
I know. I'm sorry for everyone. Thank you, Mr Mayor. So the Local Code of Corporate Governance, this document has already been to the Audit and Governance Committee. They considered that in their meeting in July, before sending it here for approval with their recommendation, Mr Mayor. The code, which is attached to Appendix A, details this council's governance arrangements, which are mapped out against the seven core principles as identified in the SIPFA National Best Practice Guidance called Delivering Good Governance in Local Government. As such, the attached code is designed to support the council in meeting its commitment to achieving good corporate governance. It's very important that we have this in place, because we are the guardians of public money, Mr Mayor, and it's important that we have the guardrails in place to make sure that the public can have full faith in us. So I would like, with your indulgence, to move the motion that this council approves the Local Code of Corporate Governance as attached to Appendix A. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Dorian. Do you have a second, please? Councillor Pierpoint? Gilbert?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr Mayor. Whilst I agree with 95% of this local code of governance, I can't endorse every aspect of it, and I propose to abstain. When I first became a councillor, there was a standards committee. It seemed to spend a lot of time hearing grievances and counter grievances by various councillors, some of whom used it to settle scores or take revenge for perceived slights. In particular, in this policy, I struggle with the word integrity, which is the quality of being honest and having strong moral principles. Political integrity is something personal, something known only to the individual who acts with integrity. And it's difficult to achieve integrity with our current political arrangements. The public no longer turn out to vote as they did in the past, because I assert they know there is something wrong with the way modern politics operates. They suspect and observing politics that there is a lack of integrity by politicians, translating into a lack of integrity within the whole system. Yet we're required to demonstrate integrity and adhere to standards of behaviour enshrined in codes of conduct. It's a bit late for that, really, in my opinion. So on that basis, I will abstain from this vote. It's the system, in my opinion, that encourages politicians to act without integrity. It's not the politicians themselves, it's not the other way around. And for me, it's just one small part of the code of governance that I can't actually support. So I will abstain on this occasion. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Gilbert. Does anybody else wish to speak? Okay, we'll go to the vote. For those in favour, please, show your hands. Rhonda, is that clearly carried? Yes, yeah. Okay, thank you. Any abstentions or anybody against? Councillor Gilbert is abstaining. Yes, yes, I noted that. Thank you. Okay, the next item on this evening is the Co-opted Independent Members on Audit and Governance Committee. John, would you like to present this, please?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The Audit and Governance Committee, its previous meeting, considered the SIPFA Best Practice Guidance, which recommends that audit committees should include two co-opted independent members. As members of this authority, you'll probably recognise already that this authority currently has one position, independent member position on the Audit and Governance Committee. So the Audit and Governance Committee made a recommendation to this council that that be changed to two independent members. Further to that, there's a second recommendation that the committee itself be authorised to co-opt those members to the committee for an appointment term of up to four years. And then finally, there's a recommendation that as your monitoring officer, I amend the constitution, if that's agreed, to give effect to those two recommendations. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, John. Do you have a second? For mountain, thank you. We don't need to, well, never mind, I've done it now. So all those in favour?
Sorry, Mr Mayor, I can't propose the recommendation.
No, no, you told me that earlier.
We need a proposer.
We did that in rehearsals. Right, can we have a vote, please? Those in favour? I need a proposal, yes, I need a proposal from a councillor. Yes. So can I have a councillor Pierpoint? Thank you very much. Do you have a second, please? Thank you, Emma. Eh? I didn't hear that. What did she say? I'm so sorry, I can't see your... Right, okay, we have a proposal, we have a second. Can we have a vote, please? No, we haven't done that yet, have we? No. Yes. Right, okay. Do you want to speak now?
Thank you. As the chairman of the Audit and Governance Committee, I'm very keen that we have some independent representation on the committee. At the moment, we have none. And clearly, I believe we should have two. And the reason is that this is a very important committee, it's a very technical committee, and obviously, we need to have people with experience, knowledge, expertise, and bringing something to the table. An external, internal, sorry, external member would be very ideal, so they can bring something extra and help us on the committee. So I propose that we go for the two members, independent members, and I will propose that one, two, three on that, on the table there. Thank you.
Do we have a second? Thank you very much. Councillor Marsden, thank you. Yeah, before we go to the vote, have we any speakers? Does anybody wish to say something? Okay. All right, we'll go to the vote. What? Yes, all the, well... Yes. Right, the next item on this evening is the South and East Lincolnshire Council's Partnership Performance Report. Councillor Dorian, would you please deliver this one?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This is an important document, because it begins to show you as councillors and give you confidence that the partnership that was formed is working and is doing what it set out to achieve. I'm sure you've all read the report in your preparation for the meeting, but I just want to point out a couple of things to you, if you will indulge me. So on page 54, under 2.1, I wanted to let you know that this, this annual delivery plan is monitored by a joint strategy board. That involves myself, councillor Pierpoint, not Pierpoint councillor, Broaden and councillor Ghosh. And we meet with the other leaders and deputy leaders of the other two councils. And we actually did that this morning and had a very productive conversation. I wanted to point out to you that 85% of the actions in our annual delivery plan are complete. They're on track or they are going to be delivered in time. Under 2.3, you can see that one of the key activities identified for this year is a development of a subregional strategy for our partnership. And that's an important piece of work, because it's going to shape our future direction. And it's already begun, because Suzanne Rolfe came along to meet with our group and discuss what our group would like to see in the, in the regional plan, subregional plan. But she also offered to meet with you as an opposition, to find out what you would like to see in the subregional plan. And it was important that you were giving that voice and that say-so. And that door's still open to you, if you wish to inform that debate. I think it's also important, Mr Mayor, that we point out on page 55, that the savings are on track. And you can see the graph at the top of the table indicates that as we stand here today, the target of savings of £2.838 million have been grossly succeeded by savings of £4.43 million. It would also be remiss of me not to point out that in three years' time, we get to a situation where we're not going to hit target. But rest assured, your senior officers and your cabinet are well aware of this matter, and efficiencies will be found, savings will be made, because we are determined to make the partnership work. If we go over to page 56, oh, sorry, I did miss out something. That was the external funding that this partnership has attracted. That was on the, and back on page 54. And that's a humongous figure, £1.78 million in total. But the column for Boston Borough Council quite clearly shows you that we've managed to attract funding of just shy of £50 million. So that's a significant achievement and one that will benefit our residents enormously. So that's a significant achievement and one that will benefit our residents enormously. Over to page 56 now. You know that the LGA peer review took place a year ago, before many of you were elected. However, their recommendations were set in stone, because this council adopted them, and our officers have been working hard to deliver on them. Their peers are due to come at the end of next week for a follow-up, and I'm looking forward to meeting with them when they arrive this year, next week. Of the 32 actions that they set us out to achieve, 94% are ready, complete, or they're on track. So I think that's a very good outcome for us. And our internal audit of the peer review action plan was undertaken, so we had belt and braces with this, and it was rated as substantial assurance. Now, the Priority Partnerships update is there for you all to read. You can see the four areas that the partnership is working on: growth and prosperity, healthy lives, safer communities, and enhancing the living environment. There also, all the narrative is there for you to read. I'm not going to go through it all, because it would just waste your time, if you can ask questions if you want to. Lastly, out of the partnership scrutiny recommendations on page 61, bottom of page 61 there, of those, 13 out of 14 recommendations are complete or are on track to be completed. So, Mr Mayor, it gives me great pleasure to move this report, and I ask council to note the recommendations listed on page 53. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Dorian. Do you have a second for your proposal? Do you need one? Councillor Pierpoint. Councillor Pierpoint, you wish to speak?
Apologies. I take of this proposal, thank you.
Right, thank you very much. Does anybody else wish to speak? Anybody wish to answer, ask a question? I've got councillor... Yes, councillor Austin was first there. Gleeson.
Mr Mayor, I'm one of those, one of the members who was always very, very enthusiastic about the partnership. I saw it as giving us a very, very small council much greater standing with joint resources, for instance, being able to afford officers perhaps that we couldn't on our own. And now, of course, we can share officers, which gives us a much higher calibre of officers in general. So this is just one of the things. I do think that, you know, it goes back quite a long time, but there's just one thing that does worry me, or I was a little bit upset about. Very recently, we had a very, very good discussion with Suzanne Rolfe, and, you know, it was very constructive. I was very sad, though, that it was sort of divided into two sessions, of them and us. Surely it would have been much better that we had all been together, sharing our ideas. However, that's in the past, so we will move on, and I am quite happy with what I have read tonight. Thank you.
It's working, isn't it?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Obviously, we welcome the work that the partnership has done and the savings that have been made. And as councillor Austin says, by joining together with the other councils, it does give us a bigger voice. However, I have a concern. And if you can look at the graph or the chart at the top of page 55, the government has put local authorities between a rock and a hard place. Not only has it decimated the money we have, and actually I'm using the word properly, most times we use the word loosely, but they have. If you compare the money that this borough had to spend between 2007 and 2011 on non-core exercises, delivering services, it has been near enough cut to a tenth. And we are now being asked, being forced to make by the government, savings, if you look at the chart, £35 million more savings than we've made so far. And there isn't the fact in our budget that, without reducing the services we are giving to our people. The reason our town is suffering now, or a lot of that reason, is the failure of government to supply sufficient funds that we can address the changes and issues that happen. And how we will be able to make further cuts and not make the town worse, I just can't see. Right, I know the administration, and we are all committed to trying to do that, but the reality is, we are being now so unfairly treated by government that it is nearly impossible. We've already heard that of our own council tax, 52% of it we give to drainage boards. Money is going to the county, and, you know, as people feel in Boston, they don't really look at our issues. We need to do it, but it's going to be hard. It's going to be a job for all of us. But we do need to realise, I think, that we're not going to make this, and we need to start lobbying and trying to affect change. That means we can make Boston better than it is.
Thank you, councillor Gleeson. Does anybody else wish to speak? Who's first? Right, okay. Councillor Woodlift, will you go first, please?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Well, I concur fully with what councillor Gleeson says. I think we have a real problem on our hands about making ends with going forward. The question is really about page 58, actually, and this is the Growth and Prosperity Priority Partnership, and it's 4.2.8, and it's the last item, actually. It talks about ongoing engagement with the nuclear waste services regarding Thedlethorpe and support the community partnership. Well, of course, we know what's going on at Thedlethorpe, that's going to be the deep storage place, isn't it, for all the nuclear waste from around the world? Maybe that's how we're going to balance the books, perhaps. Maybe that's how it's going to be. All the money's going to come in because of all the plutonium and uranium-238 and all the others, it's going to be shoved down that hole. Maybe that's the answer. But who knows? Maybe we'll all start to, you know, shine or look green, won't we? Who knows? I just wonder what it is. So ongoing engagement with the industrial waste services regarding Thedlethorpe and the community partnership, slightly vague. I'd be interested to know, not in this meeting, what exactly is planned there? Because obviously, this is a major, this is a major national infrastructure project, I would say. We won't have any say in it, of course. It'll be decided by others. People live elsewhere in the country, and certainly don't want a nuclear dump on their doorstep. But we're Lincolnshire, aren't we? So we can have that. I'll leave it at that. Anyway, if we have, can I have some information on it going forward, it'd be useful. We need to know where we stand with this, because it's potentially very, very serious, as well as potentially very lucrative if we play it the right way.
Oh, well, yes, we might get an leisure centre. I was speaking to people at Thedlethorpe Thursday night, and the mood is ugly. Do you wish to speak?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Only few words, I would like to echo what councillor Gleeson has said, I totally agree with him. I'm very glad to hear that, you know, the partnership is working, and we're making some saving, and we're trying hard. Also, I'm very glad that the partnership, which was decided by the previous council, is good for us, and, you know, we're showing something. It is positive that the news comes like that, and we are trying to fight for the Bostonians and ourselves, and I think we should keep our Boston, you know, with pride, and we should fight for it for everything, what we do. And I will support the cabinet, I will support all the members here for any hard work doing to preserve this town and to keep our history and to keep us fighting. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Danny. All right, we have a proposal, we have a second. Can we go to the vote if there are no more speakers? Do you wish to speak before that?
Can I sum up, Mr Mayor?
Yes, of course.
Thank you very much. I just want to pick up the points raised by colleagues on the opposite side of the chamber. Start with you, councillor Danny. I'm very surprised you agreed with councillor Gleeson, because after all, he was criticising the Tory government that imposed and decimated the local revenue grant that comes to local councils. So I'm surprised for someone that supported the Conservative government for so many years that you would now choose to agree with councillor Gleeson on that point. Councillor Woodlift, to your point about the Nuclear Waste Services Partnership, this document, excuse me, this document refers to the partnership. So the work the officers will do there, so just to let you know, on page 56, that table one, all of those themes are headed up by officers, not elected members. So just to reassure you that whatever's going on in Thedlethorpe, and I guess we should be worried, but officers will be picking that up on behalf of our East Lindsay colleagues, okay, not us. But having said that, I will ask that you get a briefing note on what's been taken forward so far. And just to remind you, under access to information, in our constitution, any member of the opposition can ask for any document that this council possesses. And lastly, I'm just going to councillor Gleeson now. I couldn't disagree with anything you said, councillor Gleeson. I agree with you. Our budgets have been decimated, our residents have been left much the poorer for having a Conservative government for the last 13 years, and it's appalling the way they've treated the most underserved part of our community. I would also like to say to you that I will continue to lobby on behalf of the residents. The thing about George Osborne was that he chose austerity to deal with the financial crash in 2008. I have to say, Labour didn't come out of it very well, councillor Gleeson, at the time, because they let the public relations exercise get away from them and allowed the Conservative government to say Labour emptied the coffers, when in actual fact, it was a global financial crash that put us where we were at that time. But having said that, George Osborne and his pal David Cameron chose austerity as a route out. There were other routes. We didn't have to go with austerity. There were other routes to get out of that situation, but that's what we were left with. He gave tax breaks to the rich, and he took away from the poor. So I agree with everything you said. Just to reassure you in terms of savings, and I think you and I are perhaps kindred spirits when it comes to, for instance, protecting staff and staff welfare and staff terms and conditions, that only today, one of our officers renegotiated the mobile phone contract for the partnership and managed to find a saving of a quarter of a million pounds. So all credit to that member's staff, Mr Ball, whoever that was, and there will be other avenues like that open to us. So it won't always be staffing that takes the hit, okay? And rest assured, cabinet feel the same. So I hope I've covered all the points raised tonight. Thank you for your indulgence, Mr Mayor, and I'll leave you to the vote.
Thank you, councillor Dorian. Shall we now go to the vote? If anybody, does anybody wish to say anything before that? Councillor Pierpoint?
Just on a lighter note, Mr Mayor, I just think I'd like to say to all the officers in the partnership, thank you very much for all the hard work they've been doing. I quite enjoy the partnership, I quite enjoy seeing the results and all the work that's been done. And I think it's important that we do acknowledge that all the work that the officers have done to get us so far, and thank you very much on behalf of everyone here. Thank you.
We'll go to the vote if nobody else wants to say anything. So all those in favour, please, raise your hands. Carried, Pranda? Yep, okay. And those against? And those abstains? All right, thank you very much. That concludes the formal business of this meeting. I thank you all for your attendance. May I, before I disappear, announce that my mayoral charity benefited to the tune of £600 a week last Friday, and I would like to sincerely thank all those who came along and all those who donated. Thank you all very much.